Pledge.
My pledge is to the citizens of the United States of America. In due diligence, one nation under God, in this world with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And we got everybody here tonight. Any changes to the regular agenda, Brenton? Looking for somebody to make a motion to accept the regular agenda as is. Sarah makes a motion, if they get a second.
Seven.
Definitely a second. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Consent agenda. Anything on there?
I would like to remove item four D to the regular agenda.
What do you want to do?
Do I need to motion that or?
Um, when you, why do we need to remove that?
Cause I just, for conversation, for discussion.
So what do you want to move that to a different? Move it to like, um, eleven or ten. Ten, yeah, I was gonna say it's. Remove about four D. All right, any, any other changes on that?
Um, I just had one, and then I just had one question on vendor. Vendor and. Um, on the population study, do we know what was the total cost of? I'm assuming that was maybe one of the final payments. What was the total cost for the population study? Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Hit them with a motion to accept the consent agenda with the removal of four D.
So moved.
Can I make some motion? Can I get a second? Second, all right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
From Kerry's. Uh, any changes to the council meeting minutes from January ninth? See anything but? None, I'm gonna look for a motion to accept. Okay.
Second.
Second. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Kerry. Uh, amendment to the council minutes from September sixth. Other discussion or changes on that? Just seeing all the corrected area was regards to identify the executive action motion versus. Correct here again.
Item on eight, item twenty-three.
Look at the actual minutes, there was very last page, page six. Well, we're at June item twenty-three and. Make a note.
Amendment to the council meetings from September sixth.
Okay, can we make some motion? Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
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 All right, motion here. All right, public comment, anybody got anything they want to talk about tonight besides the abatement at this point? Going once, going twice? All right. Sheriff's report. Where's he, I know he's back there. You, you want? Pardon me? Okay, I didn't know if there was any additions that you wanted to go with that or? We'll just wait till the next score on that, right? Okay. It sounds good. All right, we'll move to the one that I think everybody is here for this evening. So, um. All right, okay, I'll try and use my outdoor voice, does that help? All right. So, uh, what we're gonna do here tonight, uh, did you see in the agenda, we're gonna have the staff presentation is gonna go first. Um, then the home builders and the realtors presentation, Kevin is here for that. And then we'll do some discussion after that. I'm gonna do a little bit of a summary on some of the letters that I've got. I do, we're not gonna read them all because I can put them together in a spreadsheet format with the bullet points, we'll go through that. And then I'll open it up for some general discussion on, for this conversation. But I don't want it to get redundant. If we're all repeating the same thing, then, you know, let's just kind of stay with the bullet points that, that hasn't been discussed. You can be feel free to bring those up, but if we're just getting to be redundant, I don't want to be here till midnight. I don't think anybody else does either, so. Um, we'll start with that. I want everybody to tell us to realize, let's be respectful this evening, uh, as we have this conversation. So with that, Brenton, why don't you go ahead and start your presentation?
So this one's going to be spread out between myself, Jason, Matt. Uh, just touching base here in the new home tax, even quite few folks prior, you know what this is. It's a two-year tax abatement. It's a program that is authorized through century code. Uh, what it does is basically it takes that first hundred fifty thousand dollars and off true and full value for two years. We'll talk about total impacts here in just a little bit. What it does not address though is it doesn't debate. Paying into special assessments or drinking taxes, anything like that. It's just your general profit tax, your property taxes. Evaluations for that. It does impact a variety of different entities, city, county, schools, park districts, fire. And I believe southeast gas, so those are different pieces, of course, that are impacted by this. Uh, within horse, or within this area, you can see, um, what communities participate with it. Pretty much everybody in the metro here, over in Riley's Acres, has one, has it for a hundred fifty thousand dollars. Uh, for two years. Uh, horse, ours expired at the end of twenty twenty-two. Ours had a sunset. Council did discuss this back in December twenty twenty-one. Uh, no action was taken because we have, we had a sunset on that, so that was, probably there was no action taken on that. But that though, Jason could touch base a little bit more on the nitty gritty tied to this.
Yeah, so what we ended up doing is in contact with Kath County to figure out what our participation rate. A program like this is, um, so from two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty-two, the city permitted seven hundred eighty-three new homes. Um, within those spreadsheets of the properties that were included, there was an additional sixty permits that were from before two thousand nineteen. Uh, so we include us in total, so for the total, including that additional eight fifty-one. Uh, two hundred and eighty-two of those permits are either still under construction or have received a certificate occupancy after December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-two. Five hundred and thirty-eight new home exemptions have been issued since two thousand nineteen. Now keep in mind that five thirty-eight. Includes every year, so a property that received in twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, that property was on both of those spreadsheets, so we had to. Break out the properties that were extra, and then additionally, there were several new homes that qualified for only one year, whether they sold a property. Um, items like loss plus can affect your sentence as well. Uh, so there was some breakdown in there, so of the eight fifty-one, we've had five hundred and sixty-nine permits that are officially closed that are off our records for. Uh, building permits. Three hundred and four of those properties have received property tax abatement for at least one year. There's about a hundred and thirty properties that are currently, uh, pending application or even with the county. A hundred properties are currently unknown, meaning they may have not qualified, they may have not applied, they may be a rental. There's a bunch of reasons why they wouldn't qualify for this program. Um, and thirty-five properties, we know outright just did not qualify as their own by property management company, which indicating that they're a rental. So our breakdown right now, uh, from two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty-two, fifty-two percent of those properties that close. Have participated in a program, eighteen percent we don't know, six percent just aren't qualified with another twenty-three percent that are pending application right now. Which inevitably, if those are all approved, will put us at a seventy-six percent participation rate over those four years. So then we went.
Total number, so seventy-six percent participation rate, based on what total number?
Based on the five hundred and sixty-nine permits that we closed.
Thank you.
Of the city.
Just wanted to clarify that I'm reading that correctly on the graph.
Then we broke that down a little bit further for you guys, and this is kind of a year over year, um, from two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty-two. As you can kind of tell, we're roughly around that, that eighty percent to eighty-five percent participation rate year over year for the last four years. Um, and then the two thousand twenty-two graph again, kind of shows a little bit of different story with a large chunk of the year still under pending application. Um, but you can also see that not qualified list also has grown well, which indicates that rental market is growing in the city as well. And then I'll hand this off to Matt to kind of get into the numbers specific to how they impact borders.
So this graph, uh, this chart is the reduced property tax value. Um, you can see, take two thousand twenty-two, uh, as an example, the total abatements, uh, equal four hundred forty thousand, six hundred fifteen dollars. That comes from two hundred and twenty-eight, uh, exemptions. And so I had the county break that out into who's being affected, folks, uh, by this, so. The property tech, I'm gonna go to county, state managed, county soil conservation, city forests, which I have told it. Uh, or sort of fire, the park district, the school district, and the water resource district. And you can see, um, from point nineteen to two thousand twenty-two, how much was abated, uh, for, for each of those entities. Um, and then if you look at the very bottom, average total abatement, uh, we're looking at approximately one thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars pretty consistently. Uh, across the four years, uh, so that would be the average, uh, gain to a property owner, about nineteen hundred and thirty dollars per year. Are there any questions on this chart right now? Uh, looking at orders specifically, um, assuming every property, uh, that took the abatement, uh, receives the full hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And using the mill rates of two thousand twenty-two, uh, we're looking at approximately four hundred and six dollars for each year. So for each property over two years, they get the entire Beijing, uh, course of the. Feeding about the hundred twelve dollars. Uh, and again, they're either able to branch that special assessments and brain taxes are still paid each year. This is just based on that.
What does that last slide, so you go back to that slide one. This includes all the assessments to build the infrastructure, local to the development. Okay, I wanted to make sure I was reading that correctly.
Basically, anything special assessed out is, does not get abated by the abatement. Overall, from staff, we, we have heard a variety of different concerns and pros and cons tied to. The abatement program, just like council has and publishes stated that, thanks, and they probably will layer, layer to it here. Um, there is a group of folks that fall into this category, kind of transitionary limbo area, that are either. They're going through a process of building the home, maybe they thought that they were going to be able to take advantage of this program. They expected maybe their house was going to be built within two thousand twenty-two, and it just didn't happen. It does take a lot longer for a house to get built now than it did just a couple of years ago. Uh, so from the staff recommendation, you have, or constantly consider is to allow, oh, basically a property that was permitted for in two thousand twenty-two. It can be fairly easy for us to track based on building permit data with our inspection staff. If they had, if they pulled a permit twenty twenty-two, they'd be eligible for the program. And that'd be a separate action from whatever action the council takes in regards to the future of this abatement program as a whole. That way you don't have anybody in limbo. And if, I think it would address a lot of the different concerns that we've heard from staff or from the different folks out in community. So. That's one that we wanted you guys to consider, and then as for the abator program, like I said, as a whole, that's something council, you guys needed to make that one. Side was best considers. Also, there's, it, it can be viewed in many different ways, right or wrong, you know, I don't believe there is right or wrong. It is a perspective of how you see. Abate as a whole and helping that.
But I think too, you know, we always talked about wanting to be fair with everybody. I think it's fair to say that anybody that did pull a permit back in two thousand twenty-two should. Be able to get this abatement. And we can probably handle that one right away here if somebody wants to make a motion, because I don't see any reason why we wouldn't want to do that.
I, I completely agree with that. Take that motion.
Okay.
I second.
Okay, and we just second on that one. Um, I'm gonna roll call the vote, guys, so Sarah.
Aye.
Naomi.
Aye.
Stephanie.
Aye.
Jeff.
Aye.
All right, so that's passed, so anybody that's got, had pulled a permit in two thousand twenty-two can apply for that, uh, abatement. So you guys will get squared away with the county on that, so they're aware, all right.
And then we'll get the full two-year.
Two-year abatement, yes. Okay.
You know, it's separate, so that is the question, the, your conversation of moving forward, what's council want to do. Uh, and for the next part, it'd be the realtors and HPA, so. Present.
All right, Kevin.
Hey, where do you want me?
You can be up here, it can be over there, whichever you pick.
Just open the door.
No, I won't do that to you. I think I did invite you back here.
Uh, you can, but actually, I'd like to go back to that page where it shows all the cities.
Yes.
And. So I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna get to this here in a second, but what I want to do first of all, say thank you. My name's Kevin Fisher. I am a Realtor. I'm currently the president of the North Dakota Association of Realtors. And today I'm the spokesman for this, and I'm not a professional speaker. I get nervous if I pronounce a name wrong or something else, please. Apologize. I want to thank Mayor Peterson, council members White, Trudeau, Berkland, Landstrom, and the city administration. For allowing us to come back again today to discuss this. Obviously, it's a, an important topic. I don't know if you've ever had this many people in here before, but.
Oh, yeah.
Well, thank you all for showing up. Um. First question I have, and I want to double check just some housekeeping stuff, so, uh, Brenton, for the stuff that, uh, for somebody who closed in two thousand twenty-one. Who was eligible in twenty-two and twenty-three, they still get that abate, right? The people that qualified before.
If, if you closed in two thousand twenty-one.
Or two thousand twenty-two?
Or two thousand twenty-two, they can still apply for it, they can still apply for that even in a year from now. Uh, they have just had a post before that, now the action from council, you're just, they go, allows that they are permitted in two thousand twenty-two. Say the house wasn't finished yet, so they can still apply, they'll be able to apply as they get their CO. And calls, then they'll be able to still apply and get that, no.
And also.
Change of the nature for two thousand twenty-three, uh, is what's remaining of discussion.
It's a typical two full calendar years.
Yes. Yep, so typically if they have it. Uh, say you're in close in July of two thousand twenty-two. And they submit their abatement form tomorrow, they're looking at tax years, maybe twenty-three, they're probably twenty-three and twenty-four. Would be the tax years there, it's applicable too, because they submit the base request until later on, so.
Now, I, I know you all understand this, Suri, but for some in the crowd, in case they don't, this is only applied to an owner occupying a house. A renter, if I buy it, I'm using it as rental, I don't get that benefit.
That's correct.
Real estate agents don't get the benefit, developers don't get the benefit, builders don't get the benefit. Again, it goes to that homeowner. Like you talked about already, it's a two-year, roughly two thousand dollars a fee per year. Um, one of the things that I found, and I've been doing real estate for nineteen years, is this comes in very beneficial to like, especially a first-time home buyer. Where they can, I mean, you buy a new house, there's a lot of expenses that you don't expect. You don't have blinds on the windows. Um, you don't have a saw, you have sawed yard, so they can use that for landscape, and you definitely want to use it for window treatments, because you don't want to get to know your neighbors that well. Um. And it's a crucial component for entry-level buyers searching for affordable houses. Uh, if I'm buying the house and I'm buying a million-dollar house, is it as big of a deal? No, but if I'm buying. I know, I go back years, and it's just my wife and I starting out buying that first house. It's important. It helps us out. And to me, I know you, you brought up all the numbers, and I understand that. But to me, it's a long-term investment like these other cities. I mean, you see everybody that's pretty much got it. It can't be that horrible if everybody's got it. It's a long-term investment to bring people into your community. Once they're there, and that house is built, it's there forever. And so, um, it's very important to have that long-term investment. I know one of the things that the state of cities, and I'll bring it up again later, but. What was it, six hundred plus lots that are available? Uh, and Brenton is a lot. How much does that generate for money? Probably not a lot.
Just a.
So obviously, you get a house in there. Now you're getting a lot more money from that. It's important. Tonight, we're gonna address three areas that I heard. Um, one, well, of course, doesn't need the exemption, everybody's moving here anyway. Two, we want to slow down growth, it's coming too fast, it's too hard to handle the infrastructure. Three, concerns about the new people coming in and what are the effects on special assessments, property value, taxes. So I'd like to start out with why the city needs exemption. Well, again, I want to point back to this as one. Number two, there's been a lot of changes. The diversion is coming to Fargo now, so a lot of those areas that were floodplain are not going to be available. It's gonna be competition for you. They're getting the abating over there. As an agent, if Stephanie, if you're my client, I point that out. It's saying, they don't have it, they do, it's your choice, but it's my responsibility to give you the options and show you all the choices. And to me, that can make or break. In fact, we're gonna have one person come up talking about that later here. So again, offered in a lot of areas, the diversions in play, realtors will point out the issues, and at this point in time, Cole's here, I let Cole speak.
Brenton? Sweet. Don't worry, two minutes, I timed it myself. All right. Um, my name's Cole, and I'm here with my wife, Carissa. Um, today, we're coming to you just as first-time home buyers and horse. I reached out to Kevin as soon as I saw the inform article. Um, I knew I had the voice of my concern from our perspective, you know, untethered the business interest, just our own as. Young people who want to see, uh, this new community thrive. Um, when we first decided to build, we spent weeks driving through different developments in the area, Fargo, West Fargo, Morehead, Glendale, Mableton, even Kindred and Barnesville. We both grew up in a central Minnesota town of twenty-five hundred people and wanted that same small-town community feel without being too far from a big city where we both work. So after going back and forth on it, we ultimately decided building was the best option for our situation and the market at the time. This was back in May of twenty-two. Um, and our builder introduced us to Lost River, and we knew instantly that it was the one. It checked all of our boxes. Quiet country feel, unique home designs, and thoughtful neighborhood layout, actual trees to look out, look at, which is great in North Dakota. Um, pickleball, that was an absolute must. Um, and a two-year tax abatement on the first one hundred fifty K as we understood it at the time. Just like the lots in most, if not all the other areas, we're taking. Um, there were a lot of factors that went into choosing the perfect location for our first home, but the added cushion of the tax abatement certainly helps to live by our decision, uh, our decisions. So the exemption was basically going to save us anywhere from one hundred fifty to two hundred mortgage payment. Um, which we were planning that saved to help us expedite some of those first homebuyer costs, like a new yard for our rescue golden doodle and play fetchin'. Uh, a lawnmower, snow blower to get us out for work and maybe help out our neighbors once in a while, fencing, window blinds, the list goes on. When we found out the tax abatement program was, uh, expired, we were disappointed along with our lender, our Realtor, and our builder. And had we known about the expiration, it may have influenced our decision to move here. But in the end, we're grateful to have the funds to help us still make our new home a possibility. Uh, I can't speak for everyone, and we're also grateful we chose Forest as a community. Uh, we're more than excited. I can't speak for everyone here, but with the combination of rising interest rates and inflation. Uh, I doubt we're the only ones who've had to take a closer look at some of those homeowner essentials for first timers. Uh, like I said, we're excited to join this community and start our life here, but the dream would happen a lot quicker if the tax abatement program was reinstated or extended for some of us would. Uh, not as much of a heads up as everyone else. So I think that would keep Forest competitive, practical, thriving, and welcoming to young families looking to settle like ours. Thank you.
Uh, one of the things he points out, which is very true, is that money just doesn't get pocketed, or, I mean, it's used to improve the house, improve the value. And make Horse continue as the fine city that it is. Uh, so it's important, though, that the money is utilized and sent back into the community. Maybe not directly in the horse, but again, with window treatments, sodding yards, et cetera, and we have contractors in the, in the room here that. Benefit from that also when they are called to do the work. Second topic was, we understand it's tough to keep up with infrastructure. We understand that it'd be nice to slow the rate down so that people are not coming as quickly, so you have time to breathe, and you're not drinking out of a fire hose. But we want to show you that just the regular economy is slowing it down. There's no reaction that you guys have to take to slow it down. It's gonna happen. And at this time, I'd like to call Keely forward. You're here? Okay, come on. And also David. From HPA. But Keely, Keely today is gonna talk to you about the interest rates, how mortgage payments have changed over the last year, and I'll turn it over to Keely.
Hi, everyone. So I'm gonna kind of go back actually a couple of years, uh, in two thousand, I went to January, just, we're here in January, so January two thousand and twenty-one. The standard convention thirty-year fix, so that two point seven five, and that's for a minimum down conventional loan that a majority of these entry-level buyers were going into. So you go to two point seven five, and then a year later, the same type of clients, that rate was three point six two five. And then go down today, I checked rates, I think on Monday, that same exact example, we were at six point three seven five. So just the loan and the interest rate, and then a little bit that David's gonna touch on, from just the financial aspect. That payment difference was right around five hundred and sixty-seven dollars per month, just principal and interest, that the new homeowner was going to be impacted. Um, and again, so just the cost of everything is increasing, so add those factors into the mix. Makes it difficult.
David is the president of HPA.
Uh, yeah, thank you, and thank you all for the opportunity to hear. Uh, my name is David Reed. Uh, I own radiant homes, I'm a home builder based in Fargo. I'm also president of the Home Builders Association of Fargo and Morehead. Uh, to piggyback maybe on some of the things Keely was saying, and I think Kevin's point in bringing us up here was, uh, market conditions and where things are headed. Um, in the construction industry. There for what our, our clients and homeowners are up against. Uh, we did have, uh, one of our members. Look at, uh, base price of a home of one of their model home offerings at the beginning of twenty-two versus at the beginning of twenty-three. Uh, and this base price being three hundred and fifteen thousand dollars aside from the lock costs. Uh, that's at the beginning of two thousand twenty-two, at the beginning of two thousand twenty-three. Um, now they're, they anticipate selling that same house for three hundred and fifty-seven thousand, so three fifteen to three fifty-seven. Uh, about a twelve percent increase in the cost of the home, so. Obviously, we all know or have a pretty good idea of what's gone in the market over course of the pandemic with, uh, rising construction costs, uh, workforce issues. Uh, labor shortage, inflation, some of these obstacles and barriers that, um, homeowners are experiencing into entering the market. In the Home Builders Association and our discussions with other, um, entities and municipalities, it seems prudent that. We try to remove some of these barriers to homeownership, um, due to these times that we're in. Uh, and anecdotally, uh, you know, from my experience, and we, we don't have some of the most recent data. In hand, uh, from the fourth quarter of twenty-two. But we are experiencing a slowdown in the market, obviously in twenty-three. Uh, there's talk of a recession, we all anticipate being a recession, uh, at some point in two thousand twenty-three, so again, that's the way the market's heading. Naturally, which is something that Kevin was alluding to. Which is another obstacle that homeowners are gonna be up against, and, and so this is just an opportunity for, uh, a city to, to remove a barrier to homeownership rather than kind of. Buy along what we're already experiencing.
So we've got rising interest rates, inflation's a factor, material costs to build a home have risen tremendously, there's a labor shortage. And on top of that, we're getting into stuff now where, I don't know if you've been following the news, I'm sure you have, economic factors like, also, and I know it's not all here, but. When Microsoft starts talking about laying off ten thousand people, the tech industry is talking about laying off people. That makes it tougher for people to move. They're gonna start holding on to their money and stay where they're at, plus a lot of these people have refinanced, have interest rates that are probably three percent or less. So they're less likely to move now, because they're gonna stay put. Why move and have to pay big interest rates? And then you got special assessments on top of that, which in every area, they're brutal, I mean. So we just feel that that alone is gonna start slowing everything down. I did have the, uh, Fargo-Morehead Area Association run some numbers. From December first through January eighteenth, just to see how the market's going, and again, we had brutal cold, but we live in North Dakota, we've had brutal cold before, and. how the market's going. And again, we had brutal cold, but we live in North Dakota. We've had brutal cold before and I've had open houses during that time session. And you get 20 groups through yet. I mean, they're crazy, but they come. So right now, we are down 40%. Forty percent in closings. From this past December, January eighteenth to the previous December, January eighteenth. It is slowing.
Is that in our local region or is that specific?
That is on our MLS, which would be our local region. Yes, that's correct. And then the The other part of this that concerns me is with Horace, it is a wonderful community. We want rooftops in here. We want housing. It's going to bring more people in and with more people comes the commercial. And so if I am the Dairy Queen up the street, I'm not happy if there's talk about artificially slowing it down. I want everything to be the way it is to keep people coming in. This is important and I'd like to have Gina Yeg come up. Is that right? And then Chris Matt right behind. Chris is here.
Hey, guys. Thanks for allowing me. The city of Horace has been awesome to me. First of all, I have to say that as a new business owner in the community, I own the Grove Coffee and Wine just down the street. For us, when we looked at opening a new business, which was kind of a, kind of a dream of mine always. My boys pushed me to do it, which was awesome. Without them, I probably didn't have. But to keep it short, looking at the growth, the expansion, we use the Small Business Center to run numbers for us. We've moved into Business Center to run numbers for us. I talked to the state of North Dakota, just with the growth Horace was having at that time. It meant a lot to us to step up on that ledge and put up a brick and mortar business in a community that doesn't have a lot of business. So that was one of red flag for a lot of people looking to bring in a small business, not having a lot. But for us, it was, there's going to be a lot of growth. We're going to get the head ice curve. And looking at taking something like this away and slowing down, like with the economy, the economy is already slowing down. We're already a luxury. So we see people backing off of that stuff. When you add on higher house cost, it slows people from wanting to move or it slows people from wanting to spend on a luxury item like a coffee in the morning or a bottle of wine at night. Doing the things that we came out here to do because of the community. The small community aspect's been absolutely wonderful and anybody looking to come out here, it's totally worth it. I highly recommend, from our perspective, that's why I wanted to speak was just to say that as a small business owner, we projected the growth, not probably to the extent it has been, but we welcome it because that just means our business is going to thrive and that brings tax revenue in a different way to the city. And it brings more people even into the city that don't live here for sports. When we have things at the high school and middle school, we have other communities coming in and stopping by and buying stuff. That's revenue for Horace. And seeing more people moving into the community and the vibrancy, it's just going to help make people want to be out here and come out or even drag out from Fargo to see us and check us out. They might call them all at the area and say, hey, I got to live here. So.
Hey, I'm Chris Mack with Christianson Developments. Everybody knows me as on the council. Thanks for hearing us tonight. Here's two things I want to point out and then Kevin mentioned it too. We're, we also, I have a developer work. We also do a lot of commercial too. So as we see Dairy Queen, we're working on other commercial developments in that same area. I think there's about 25 or 30 acres of commercial that is still available up around that Dairy Queen area. We do have lots of interest on the commercial side. We are trying to get a larger user in that location. And we also are working with other gas stations and other commercial development in that area. With this abatement being removed. I think it's it's kind of going in the wrong or not in the wrong direction, but we weren't aware of it and and with everything else kind of slowing down, as Kevin mentioned, and everybody up here has mentioned. It's slowing down naturally because there are projections for recession. And by removing it, we'll even slow it down more. And then just on the residential side, we, we're not a builder, but we sell, we sell lots and we have four subdivisions north of Lakeview up in South Dale. And in South Dale first and second, or first and third. Everything that we had optioned, it got sold right away. There was no second guessing, anything like that. Now with fourth and fifth, that a lot of builders kind of give lots back and we're kind of on going back and forth on kind of uncertainty. And this was prior to the abatement. Being involved. So.
So again, the, the market is slowing down naturally. New construction attracts more commercial opportunities. You get the sales tax from that. You also get the property tax. We don't want the, I, I don't want Horace to come across as like, listen, we want to slow everything down. We have people coming in here. As a, as a commercial entity, I want to see the traffic. I'm going to look at the patterns. How many people are coming? What's going on? It's important to have those. It'd be awesome to have a grocery store here. I'm sure that, I, I don't know, maybe there's a smaller one, but like a major one. To have that here. So you guys don't have to drive all the way to Fargo or West Fargo, the grocery shop. You know, if you're making tacos that night and you forgot the shells, you can just go right over and come right back. And again, now you're getting that property tax plus that sales tax on that.
Kevin, if I could.
Yeah, absolutely.
I think I've got some numbers that I think would help qualify some of what these posters are talking about or quantify it. The National Association of Home Builders did an economic study of our area being Ass County, Lady County. So they did a local study. This was issued to us in October of two thousand and twenty-one. And they analyzed 951 single family homes and that economic effect, economic impact that that has both immediately and over a fifteen-year period. So just some quick numbers for that that no one may remember given out here, but for instance, there, there's three different phases in which this economic impact from home building happens. The first one being the actual construction phase where there's materials being bought, there's jobs being created, there's fees and taxes. The second phase being a ripple effect from the construction phase, and that's wages spent in the local economy. The third phase is the occupancy phase where earnings are being spent from the local economy and that's more of an ongoing annual effect. But even in the first year, the first year's impact just from single family construction, this is 951 homes. There's total local income of 157 million. First year impact for the, the ripple effect that I was talking about, that's wages being spent in the local economy. That's another 70 million. Now, obviously, when you build these homes, there's costs associated with that. There's fire, there's police, there's those kind of municipality costs, but the study from NEHB and we could readily send this out to anyone that's interested, this was by Robert Deeds, the chief economist. Over a fifteen-year period, taking that local economic income versus the cost, there's a over a fifteen-year period, a hundred million dollar debt income for the, for, for the local economy. I'm just put some actual numbers to that because we do have some, some great local studies that have been done.
So the third, you can step here, please have any more to add, but the third and final was the special assessments, taxes and property value. Well, one of the things I want to say again, coming from state and cities is with 600 plus lots available, that genie's out of the bottle already. I mean, you're going to have costs there and we'd rather have a, a street that you're snow plowing with all houses in there rather than two houses and you have to still go up and down that street. So you got costs already with special assessments. But with the special set, with the people coming in, that helps to pay down those specials. Maybe eventually you can sunset the lagoon and not have to about that anymore. Again, it's going to create a larger tax base, the more people that come here. It'll help you to update the infrastructure to pass away with more people coming. I believe walls coming. When's welcome next year?
This year.
This year. Okay. So walls coming this year. And again, bringing in more commercial businesses in, not only the property taxes, but the sales taxes. So this is all going to help you to get to where you want to go. Yes, is it a pain to go from A to B? But at least you get the help of more people moving into the area. At this time, I'd like to call two builders up, Shelley and Nels Thompson. You guys can come up here, please. And obviously, so we talked about the homeowners, but these are people, whether developers or builders that have purchased at Horace, invested a lot of their wealth toward doing things here. And this kind of puts them in an awkward situation too, because nobody knew this was coming. Had they known this a year or two ago, they might have reacted differently. Shall I go ahead?
Well, fortunately, because I'm not really good at public speaking, most of the people that already spoke to what I have to say. So in the, in the to not go over what everybody else has already settled, to say a few things I can pick out of here that'll kind of help a little bit. I guess the biggest thing that he said, I kind of have a unique perspective. I have a real estate agent and my husband's a builder. And so that gives us me at the ability to see the homeowner's side and him at ability to see the investor's side. As a homeowner, I can say that this is going to be, we have probably one of the most affordable houses in town. And that, I guess I pride myself on. That's what allowed me and my husband to get our kids into a home. It's what allowed us to grow our family and be part of a community. Rentals are great, but we all know people take more pride in their homes. Again, being a very affordable builder, we have also tried to keep that as affordable as possible. In the last two years, I think any builder at any price know that it's been a nightmare. It has been an absolute nightmare. No matter how much from the outside, it looks like we've been extremely busy. We've also, that has come with extreme complications, trying to keep these affordable for people, trying to keep employees, all of that. So in interest of keeping affordable housing for everybody, if we do sit on these lots for longer, if we take away this tax abatement, it's going to put more it's going to put us in an awkward position because we're going to have to raise our prices of our houses. We still have to pay the specials on the lots. We aren't bringing any taxes. You know, we're just paying minimal on taxes. Sure. But the, so that's not helping your community at all. But we are paying specials on those lots, which in turn is going to make us have to up the price of our homes. Our overhead is going to go up. Our construction loans are going to go up and therefore making those houses even more unaffordable to people. We've seen it, even though you guys will see, you see the number of permits pulled, a lot of the new construction permits that are pulled are also homes that are just stuck. They're just basements and they're waiting there to be sold because we do have to build throughout the year and we can't dig and pour basements in the winter. So again, it may look like this has, is still booming. But a lot of those basements are still sitting there and they will continue to sit there if they take the tax abatement. Especially at my price point. So I guess I would encourage you to, to keep this going, especially in the last two weeks. I can't tell you how many calls I fielded from agents, from prospective buyers saying, do you have any lots that aren't in Horace? Unfortunately for me, I don't. I don't. And I, I love Horace. I, that's why we chose to, to invest here. And so that's, that's unfortunate that I have to tell people, no, I don't. And we're the most affordable home. That being said, there's also kind of a gray area and I respect you guys for taking care of the people that already had their permits in there. Thank you very much. That's, that's great. There is kind of a gray area because of the fact that it also wasn't posted until a few days into January. As any real estate can tell you, we work 24/7. So we were working the first of January, we were working the second, the third, where we did inadvertently write contracts that now we have to go back to those people. Well, that day we collected earnest money. That's tough, you know? It's tough for them. It's tough for us. What do you do? So that's one thing where I challenge you to kind of look at that. And then another thing I do know that you guys are hearing from both sides. I understand you have people that live here. I'm sure it wasn't just emails from new homeowners, prospective homeowners, builders that you were getting. And so you're on both sides of it. But one thing I think we need to also, as, as we need to be just as transparent with the new homeowners that we're building, that this tax abatement could expire. We also just have to be just as transparent with these homeowners who've been here for 20 years. They've got acre lots, they have unaffordable specials. And their taxes are going up. I understand that. And that sucks and I would not want to be in that position, but unfortunately, those floodgates were opened several years ago. Your specials aren't going to go down. All the infrastructure is already going in. The roads are already slated to be put down. That money is already being spent. You can't get it back. So your only option now is to bring in more tax revenue. These homes are going to do that for you. Build your community. I understand it's not a good position for anybody. But the choice was made years ago and you have to do the best what's, that's for your community now.
Well, good evening, Mayor Summerville, everyone in attendance. Thank you. First, thank you too for what you've already done, for honoring the permits that pulled. Really do appreciate that because I know ultimately the impact is real for our clients and anyone else in here that have clients of such benefit. So thank you for that, first of all. Second, I think Ely, is that her name? Thank you. She shared something on interest rates and I just wanted to address that first. I don't remember the exact stat. Let's try to put into perspective the portability with the interest rate increases and also speak a little bit to that myself as well. I had seen something with interest rates going from, it was either three to four or three and a half to four and a half. Now we're at six point something. Someone who could afford $450,000 with that one percentage point change, now could only afford $350,000. So the interest rate is really material impact in the affordability. And I know this isn't going to fix that. I recognize that. But consumers are being pinched from every direction, especially in residential construction. And if you want to build the community, we really have to figure out everyone together, doing each of their individual parts. How can we save every penny, every dollar because everything matters to be able to afford the home and move in. So obviously, I'm a component of the tax exemption policy. You know, our business is providing a joyful building experience for our clients and we enjoy doing that. We thrive in doing that. And the tax exemption policy is a tool that our sales team and realtors can use to sound the jerk. Obviously, as someone already shared, if one city doesn't have it, that tool has now gone away. And it is harder to move lots and sell homes and product in that community. So there is already a disadvantage right up right from the get-go. This is especially true for first time home buyers with the affordability, taking on the first mortgage. It's, it's a big step. I know. I remember when I bought my first home, it was nerve wracking, taking on that mortgage and knowing that I had to pay that substantial bill every month. It's a big deal. And ultimately, I think I saw it was about $2,000 a year. Seventy-eight percent of Americans today live paycheck to paycheck. That's the reality of how people are living today. And the debt is an issue. Again, a separate issue, but at the end of the day, if people don't have the expendable income to be able to put up the blinds or do other things, they're going to make a different decision and a different choice rather than building new construction because they can't keep just adding every dollar. Consumers looking to purchase new construction, as I mentioned, it's just going to pinch in every direction. The rising material costs, labor costs, land costs, costs due to the increase in building code requirements. And just general inflation, it all takes away from that expendable income. The affordability issue has really been a rising concern for years, which has gotten dramatically worse since the pandemic. We all know that. So I'd like to share a few stats that I've spent quite a bit of time over the last couple of months looking at. And have shared some of this with some of our trade partners who I know are actually in the audience tonight. Just trying to paint the picture of really the reality of what's happened over the last couple of years. The median pricing of new construction homes that have closed in the last two years has increased $150,000 or 60% in two years. Interest rates have more than doubled in the last twelve months. Interest rates that are here today haven't been seen since 2008. That's when the last crash happened. The local market was down 20 to 30%. You shared it was around 40% the most recent that you looked at. The local market was down 20 to 30%, you shared it was around 40% the most recent that you looked at. And the local market in construction absorption rate is currently at 2% in general for the area. Horace is at, sorry, in general for the area, it's 3% and Horace is 2%. Have you guys seen the letter from Rory Anderson? Okay, it sounds good. And so the absorption rate for anyone who doesn't know, that is essentially how long it takes to sell through the inventory, how fast it's moving. So essentially what you do is you look at the last 30 days, how many homes have sold? And then you look at how many companies are currently listed and you use that to figure out what that absorption rate is. So currently in the metro areas, I mentioned, it's 3%, which means it would take 35 months to sell through all of the current inventory at that rate. Horace is at 2%, which means as Rory mentioned, it would take 50 months to sell through the inventory that's there.
I just want to make one comment, Chase, this is exactly, I brought this letter up to you. If this is accurate information, I think us as a council really need to be doing a better job of what kind of developing we are doing. Because we are looking at 97, what is it, 97 million dollars that we're going to be doing tonight on this agenda for a lot. Is that, is that correct? So if you're telling me that we have an excessive amount of homes here, which I've been told that we don't, we just had a study done here where we paid somebody to come here and tell us that we don't have enough. So I'm really.
I guess to, to speak to that, it isn't necessarily that you don't, that you have too much inventory. It's because of all of the economic situations that has decreased the amount of sales that are. So people aren't buying. That's what I'm trying to get to. So truly, there aren't enough homes for the community, which is also why the commercial isn't.
I do want to remind you.
Sure.
That the abatement has been gone for 24 days. So the abatement has nothing to do with that absorption rate that you were talking about. I just want to let that be known in the audience.
Yep, 100%. And I think I said at the beginning of this, like, this tax abatement issue isn't going to solve all of them sharing. I'm simply trying to communicate some of the stats and the information of where the local market is at. And that affordability is really an issue and every dollar and every penny matters. And so that $2,000 that they save from the tax abatement can really make a significant difference. So I also just want to share some of our personal stats to drive the point home, that it isn't just the market in general. We're one of the largest builders in the area. I don't know exactly where we stand and I'm not saying that to tout. I'm trying to say that because we also have some of the information of the data based on our own experience from what we're dealing. Our closings were down around 10% last year. Contracts received were down around that market range. Backlog is almost worse than what we've ever encountered. And specifically in Horace, contracts received are down 43%. So I will get the last three months year over year. And so again, it isn't directly related to the tax abatement. It all comes down to affordability and trying to figure out how do we keep that issue from stopping people from buying? That it already has and is going to continue.
Well, what I wonder is. Sorry, we just moved here and we're really excited to be here and I don't know that the people that live here want to grow and be. West Fargo.
Yeah.
I love this mouth of, we're still going to grow. I almost wanted Fargo. And I'm, we're excited about investing or doing something in the community. And like I said, the tax payment didn't matter to us. And also you talk about all these new homes, these new homes, these, okay, this was our step up, this was our big home. And so you get so many of these low, lower, less simple income, but we moved up from that. You know, so I just felt like Horace and special is different than that. I love that small community built. So as a business owner, I mean, we're pretty excited.
I understand everyone's in a different place and so I, I respect your opinion on that. So really, this changes impact with a lot of people, like I mentioned. We have 13 clients who have experienced an issue with the tax abatement specifically. The majority of those, I think, will be resolved with what you've already done. So again, appreciate that. I do really think that we have an issue, as I've mentioned, with affordability. Every dollar counts and I just ask that you really consider that as we're looking at, how do we move forward? Because ultimately, if there's a crash in the housing market, it impacts everyone. It's not just us, it's not just the trades. It's every single community and every single person. So thank you for the time.
I'd like to finish with a quick summary. Number one is like, as explained by many people here. Every cent matters. Right now, we have, as was explained, a lot of expenses out there for a person looking to buy a new home. We talked about starter homes quite a bit and how big of a deal the abatement makes for that. We also, if, if people are looking to move up right now, when they got these awesome interest rates at 3% or whatever, it's hard for them to leave that. I've had a few now that like, they can't leave. I mean, the interest rate's too high to go get our dream home. We're going to be paying way more than we're paying rent on mortgage and it just doesn't make sense for us to do that. Number two, thank you, thank you seriously for, anybody you did who's a homeowner that's going to get their permit and you're going to take care of them. But I also ask, we got builders and developers who stepped up too. They got blindsided by this and they will be affected by it and we ask that you help them out too. Third, there's many people in here, there's a lot of realtors, there's title company, there's lenders. That was our holiday party. We're all supposed to be having a great time. We felt this was so important that we're here. Finally, this to me means the world. These people, I understand when you ran your studies and how much that two-year abatement is a missed opportunity. But that's the same for all these people. And they're still doing it and they're increasing from 75 to 150. It's a long-term game. You got to think long-term. Yeah, the short term is going to affect you. But once those houses are here and those six hundred lots are filled and they're not sitting empty, that's a lot more income coming in and that's also going to drive more commercial business down here. See, the sales tax, property tax from that, property tax from the people moving in. And finally, it's, it's, I'm a builder and I got houses and nobody's buying them. The next step is to turn into rentals. Now, I'm not saying rentals are bad. I have quite a few rentals. Right now, lately, I haven't been able to do anything because the market was so hot, so demand that, I can't make the numbers work. The prices were shooting up, there was multiple offers coming in on properties. I couldn't buy any rentals. The downturn happens, not only for myself, but I have a lot of clients that are looking for that opportunity to jump in and get into rentals. I'd rather see a homeowner there. Homeowners take much more pride in their ownership and they'll keep their properties a lot better. Thank you for your time. I appreciate everybody listening.
Kevin, would you have, if you guys have some questions, would you go on and answer?
I can try. Go ahead.
Anybody in the council here have questions they want to ask Kevin?
Did you read the study or the report that Fargo had actually paid $60,000 for a consultant to write?
I did not read that. We do have, as Mayor Peterson can attest to, we have a monthly meeting, I'm part of a group that has 30 members that have come speak to us. And I know Amir Mahoney's been there the last five years, once, once, you know, one month a year. And Mayor Dardis has been there. We've discussed abatement and property taxes. Now Fargo goes a little bit further. Not only is it about the abatement, it's about the Renaissance zone and the tiffs and bringing in these.
We broke it up in this, in this report.
So.
I will say that they spent a lot of money on a consultant to tell them really that they shouldn't be partaking in the tax abatement for new homeowners.
I want, I want to say one thing that I'm going to ask Bryce or whoever to. Okay. One thing is, when I first started the business, Morehead bought an expert in too. And this is what they needed to do and, you know, change their format so not just having entry level houses, having mixed houses, this, that, whatever. It blew up, it didn't turn out very well at all. So, go ahead.
I did read what Tishler Bees had to say about the two-year tax abatement, which was granted, Fargo spent $60,000 for someone's opinion that does not make that opinion right. That was a subjective study, I believe that part of that study was inaccurate. As does a significant number of builders, realtors, developers and homeowners in Fargo that subsidized that study that was an opinion, $60,000 inaccurate opinion.
A lot of money for an opinion.
People have paid a lot of money for that thing.
That particular opinion sounds very expensive. Since that has come out, was it brought before the Fargo City Commission?
Yes.
And how did they vote on that?
But the committee, the city councils were well aware of it. No, no action has been taken based on that study. But there are plenty of grassroots initiatives in Fargo, which I'm part, that have long holes.
So the study was actually just last February. I actually have a copy if anybody would like to see it here tonight. So I do think the consultant's findings were not directly based on the horse market, but I think that they have correlations to our market. I mean, what, what would you say to the consultant's evaluation and stating although a benefit, meaning the new tax abatement, although a benefit to residents of new construction, the benefit is quite small relative to the overall housing costs. So it does not appear to influence the buyer's decision while it's limiting the city revenue. The exemption is available in neighboring communities, but the strength of Fargo's market will outweigh the value of the incentive to new homebuyers. And again, while I said that study is not reflective directly of the study of Horace, I think that the same conclusions can be drawn to Horace, that our market will outweigh the value of the incentive to new homebuyers as well. There's other information in the, in the study too. And it, and it was discussed in February and it was brought to their economic development committee for further review. It didn't mean that they didn't act on it. It meant that they were reviewing it.
Was it February of last year? Did I hear that right?
If you'd like a copy, it's February, yep, February of 2022.
So that, that data is based on that timeframe, not what's happened the last several months here. What, what data is your information based on? Correct. Current? Current NLL?
Yeah, I'm looking back at HPA, yes.
You're, you're saying it's less.
My NLL stuff was, was, yes, that was right now. It was, I was compared December 1st to January 18th of last year compared to this past year. And it was a 40% decrease, but that wasn't just new construction. That was overall housing. The market was down about 40%.
And I don't, and I don't know that a person can say that the affordability of a home for somebody is, is based on this abatement that they get for 24 hours.
It definitely helps to do things like you said, they're spending back in for blinds, sawed, whatever. But also that study, I would say I would want to break that into two parts. Affordable housing and the upper end. So if somebody's building a million dollar house, that study's not going to matter. They can afford it anyway. So it just depends on the price range of the house that's being built. Yes, please.
Again, I think that I've come up with a lot of different issues here. I believe you walk a very thin line, but as a city or a community, you decide who is good enough for a house and who is not. That's not right.
And we would be doing that based on whether we give an abatement or.
No, I'm just saying, we need to understand that everybody should be able to be in this community, no matter what type of housing they're in for. Because they're trying to invest in your community.
Okay, do you guys have any other questions for Kevin?
There's any people that live in Horace that have any comments that they would like to make? That within Horace.
Okay, if you have a comment, go ahead, stand up and introduce yourself.
This doesn't make a difference because I'm not even, and I, I appreciate what you're saying. I'm a single person that wanted to, I used to come back to have a house that I could work in and have big enough. And I'm from West Fargo and my mom grew up here. And that tax abatement doesn't make a difference because I have bought a house many halfless, it was a small house, but it was existing. It had the fence, it had the yard, it had all of the things. I mean, I had to put in lines because I didn't like theirs, but that's fine. Buying this house and having to put in a fence, a yard, all those things that go with it. And I am so excited to be here. I love this community, but I'm, I'm not 20, it's not my first home, it's my final home. And I am so excited to be here, but that makes a difference. They know about what, what financial it'd be. My first time homebuyer, if you're moving, it is, it is a step up. I had a house of 800 square feet. I, and I loved it, but I'm so excited to be here and it makes a big difference. It really does. Thank you.
Thank you. Harlan?
Harlan Fisher, I've been in Horace for some time and when I moved out here with my third home that I built. And I, at the time, the tax abatement was reinstated and that made a difference for me. First of the year, it helped take a lot of load off. It doesn't sound like a lot of money, but it makes a big difference. Also, I have a handful, I'm a realtor as well, I have a handful of clients that they, when they built new, I remember talking to the lender and he said, they can't do anymore. And I said, they're, they're, they're maxed on their loan. And he said, I'm concerned when it comes to year three and four. So I had to coach my clients heavily up for year three and four when the abatement was taken off, but they could not have moved into those houses without the abatement for the first two years.
So one of the things I was going to do too, we did get some emails and so what I did was I, and some letters. What I did was I kind of condensed them down into bullet points, so I was just going to go through them because some of those are, are backups for what, Kevin, for what you're saying. And some, some other people have different opinions on this, but you know, the HPA sent a letter, then basically, you know, the new bills pay for themselves in 18 months. Encourages families to come and invest in Horace, positive ripple effect through Horace. And Karen Olson is another one who sent one. She's built, building in Southdale, was disappointed about the abatement, wanted to be grandfathered in. So that one we corrected tonight. Barton Hochalter, so is, is against this. He said is no longer needed as an incentive for growth that we are having. Effectiveness of the tax abatement as an incentive should be questioned. If a $4,000 abatement determines whether a new home is purchased because of what a buyer can afford, perhaps they should consider purchasing a more affordable or older home. Allowing the property tax abatement to continue is a loss of revenue to the local government entities, including the fire department, park districts, school district, water board and city and county government. Miranda Bergdahl sent a letter basically stating she built a home in 2010 and benefited from the abatement and she appreciated having it. Rick Davidson is against it, says discontinuing the tax abatement is not needed anymore. It was started in 1982 when the rates were 12 to 14%. It did help people get in back then, but now it's currently costing all the taxing authorities too much money. Heidi Schardt sent in a letter to basically stating it was scheduled to close on, on the 12th. Or so they were supposed to close on, on December 8th, they got pushed to the 12th. She wants to be grandfathered in. Again, we covered that one. Bertie Holmes sent one too, basically kind of going over some of the same things that you talked about or you guys had mentioned about where we are with the, with the economy, concerned about absorption rates, concerned about houses not, concerned about being able to push the current inventory. Jason Carpenter sent another one, taking away from the tax abatement, isn't just going to affect the people receive. It's going to hurt everyone who's bringing, trying to bring business in town. Of course, removing it may damage, maybe da, very damaging for people thinking about coming this way. It's also damaging to people who committed to spend their lives here. So if removing this abatement is not a dire thing, I think we need to, he said, I think it makes the city look like it doesn't care for the residents or businesses coming this way. And I think not reinstating incentives will hurt Horace with no real benefit. Jack Dwyer sent in a note too, he's a developer out in Lost River. I have invested a tremendous amount of time and energy and money in the Horace and our community goal to bring amenities to town that fam, that families like ours will enjoy for years to come. Some of the things that we would like to see in Horace will take additional rooftops over time. Dr. Mark Anderson sent in a note, says basically he's a builder, echoes the concerns of what we've discussed here this evening. Concerned about the economy and possible stagnation in moving homes and tax abatements encourage home sales. So those are the letters that I got and that's like condensed versions of them. Does anybody here have an opposing view on the abatement? I'd like to hear it. I've got some letters, but I don't know if anybody here has an opposing view on that. Go ahead, introduce yourself. Yeah, I didn't catch the name. Go ahead, introduce yourself. Yeah, I didn't catch the name.
You know, those type of houses couldn't get it all. Last year I bought one and I was so proud of it. So I understand that. But if we just keep building houses like this, I feel like all of a sudden we're going to be a bigger, bigger. For Fargo and I don't want to, I want to be special. You know, like they said, I mean, people will, people will come.
Yeah, thank you. Anybody else have comment on that? Yep, go ahead.
Somebody who we used to know for our residents. I've lived thirteen years and our taxes have tripled. But I don't think it's just homeowners that eat to tax evasion. There's updates and missing that we need to make our homes, but.
Can I ask a question on that? So you had six hundred lots out there. Imagine they all have houses on them. They're all now tax paid. Wouldn't that in effect lower everybody's taxes?
Lowering taxes? We know lower taxes.
Well, lowering the, the bill.
But that's.
Because you're spreading it out over that many more homeowners.
But in, in bird community, if you don't fill those homes, right, make her taxes go higher.
When we sell all those and get homes out there.
Yes, would they then, these holders, and if they're.
Okay, so does anybody else have any comments on that? Go ahead. Introduce yourself first.
State tax increased three hundred and ten percent. The fire department, four hundred and eighty-seven percent. The park district, three hundred and eighty-three percent. Now that doesn't count next year. We're looking at six percent more and thirty-eight percent more for the park district. On top of that, the city now gets a two percent surcharge on our electricity bill and our natural gas bill. I've lived out here for forty-five years. I've seen no increase in service where we're at. I'm still on a set system, Merrell Water, they ask on the electric for. A, a street light. I'm a little concerned where, who's going to pick up the tab as we continue this, because so far it's been the people that have been here.
All right, anybody else?
Even though I did not choose to be part of the city, I was forced to. Now my taxes pretty much went up probably up to a hundred percent because of that. And. It's not the city taxes I'm concerned about. It's the special assessment step for continuing like the indicated control up. I mean, we're looking at. Five to fifteen thousand just for the. Wall Avenue improvement. Another, I mean, we were. Initially in a, a special assessment for the park district for a new park out there that was going to be up raised about five thousand dollars. And I understand there's a lot more purchase. Plans also. I mean, it's not the abatement that is making me angry because that went up substantially. It's all the unknowns that are continuing to be.
But we are talking about the abatement issue right now. That is what we're dealing with. So. Okay, anybody else have any comment on the abatement?
I guess we came today. To ask that. Abatement obviously be reinstated back to the first. And then also it's set up in a way that is not sunsetted, but voted on. So if you do two years, at the end of two years, if you don't want it anymore, you vote on it, say no. And then at least you give the people another year to react to that. So they know ahead of time. So it just doesn't fall through the cracks. We'd like it to have to be addressed.
All right, anybody have any other comments they want to make that hasn't already been made?
What was, what was the main reason for take away the tax abatement when you got it voted on?
It's not to stop growth by anything.
And we didn't vote on it?
Vote on it.
How, how did you just damn?
It expired.
It had a sunset clause in it that it would expire at the end of the, end of last year. Not unless it's discussed or brought up. No, that gets brought, I mean, it can get renewed, but it does have a sunset clause in it. So if the council doesn't vote on it, or we don't have a discussion about it, it will automatically sunset and. It's been known since that, it's every two years it comes around. So, yeah.
But that shared by, with everybody else, or everyone that sunset was going to end that?
Yeah, it's been talked about in meetings in the past or.
We did not. We talked about when we had a client, those closing, and all of a sudden it wasn't there anymore. They disappeared. And then.
Made it disappear. It sunset, I understood it expired.
Some cities have it where it doesn't sunset. They have it, but it's a place where you actually have to vote on it too. Taken away, which I think is a really good idea because it would omit the fact that people are surprised that don't know the inner workings of how a city complex works. And the, the sun setting and things like that. I think that's where the confusion came in is that most people would not know that these don't automatically renew the block of their town.
If each builder are investing so much in the big community, then they should know that when you do your research.
That's definitely, there's no research to do. If you want to go look at the minutes, it's not out there like that. But I've been heard about it too. I'm the one that actually found out about it after the time and I have people cancel on consult with their fund. But I guess to the fact where some people say that, you know, if you can't afford a house, I know that was brought up in one of your things. Then I get that. I'm all about being financially responsible. What people don't understand, maybe Keely as a baker can attest to this. Whether you have a house that's. Three thousand dollars less a month. Say a builder takes out five thousand dollars, you, that you could afford that, that's sort of public about five dollars a month. Different from a hundred and fifty a month. I mean, we could take down these. Payments on these houses by, you say, the builder would have to take twenty grand off it, where it can come close to making a difference, the amount of difference that the abatement takes. And I think that's where some people aren't understanding. It's not that these people can't afford these homes. It's that it's a huge difference than the home just being less expensive.
But it, but it's just an abatement for twenty-four months.
And when they are qualified, these homeowners are qualified on the full amount.
Exactly. So I, I mean, I guess my point is it's, it's a short term.
It is.
It's just, it's just short term. I mean, it's not, they're, they're not basing. Purchase of the home.
I am a realtor and I am a mother and I live here. So I bought in Horace, thankfully before the abatement ended, but I bought in Horace, the culture to the schools. That my children go to. And it helps me as a single mother, I don't have anyone else helping with my finances. That three hundred dollars a month, we'll just say it's two hundred, that helps me afford a vehicle for my children. So I don't have to rely on the buses. No, does not have, there's not enough bus riders. There's buses getting canceled. That makes a huge difference on my clientele. I've had. Plenty of clients that have said, well, if the abatement doesn't go in, I am not going to consider that builder. So these builders are not going to be considered because they don't have the potential right now for me. That was not something that they knew about. I brought it to their attention now, but nobody knew about it. The. All the Realtors Association didn't know that it was one of the, it wasn't. So that could be a huge difference. Take care of their children to prepare their own.
It's a hundred and fifty dollars or two hundred, or a hundred and sixty-six because it's taxes.
For twenty-four months.
Right, but it's, it's like they said with the builder, it's part of the loan.
And then on month twenty-five, the, the full, the home is taxed at its full value.
Okay, so, all right.
At month twenty-five.
Hey guys, hang on. You had another, go ahead.
After getting his first job, I brought him to Horace. I love this community. He and a lot of first time home buyers, especially new college graduates. They are looking at, he started at Archway subsidiary accounting for Microsoft. He knew he was going to get wage increases. Just got him into the home that he could afford. And then in two years, he knew he could afford what would hope. That he could afford it because of the raises he was going to be getting as a new college graduate. Then he got married. And then he loved Horace, wanted to stay in Horace, started looking in Horace for another house. So you're going to have that loyalty because of the community that you have. But the new college graduate, which, which we have five colleges, between a two to a four year college. Those people are out looking for homes. Our typical market is sixty-seven percent. I don't think that's changed correctly if I'm wrong for first time home buyers. So those people do depend upon that because of how their income should raise, hopefully. So I just want, thank you for listening.
Um, Kevin, a quick question. You know, about the, what about, how does it impact homeowners in Horace that maybe want to sell their home? And there, does it affect their property values because everything around them is now much lower because of that abatement? Can you speak to?
No, I, I don't think the abatement has an effect overall on the sale. In my experiences that we're selling, that's not a concern. We're looking at the house itself and that same house, the competition, what they're going for and pricing accordingly, with or without an abatement. So that has no effect on recent.
All right.
May I? One thing?
Go ahead.
I, uh. I just would like to see a show of hands for a visual here. How many are opposed in this audience? I, I know we've got a couple. Show of hands, raise them high so I can see. And how many are for? How many people are homeowners in Horace that are here? So I need to see. Thank you, all of you for coming.
Okay, does anybody else have anything else they want to add that hasn't been already discussed this evening?
Just wondering, I'm a builder, I follow guys, but I've got a client who's trying to be. Specifically said because they're pulling off, having this, because they have a child that's graduating in two years. And instead of you not collecting a hundred and fifty dollars. Or on your tax abatement or whatever that number is you discussed. Now they're waiting to build that one point one million dollar hole for two years till their child graduates. So. You need to take a detailed look at it and realize that it's not. The hundred and fifty dollars that you're not collecting, it's still one million or whatever that number is. It's being put off and not being built for several years and whatever that time might be.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Al, you would?
I have a, a question. Do we know, have you ever done a study, has anybody ever done a study about the, the cost of. The income coming into the city, how that balances the additional cost for. I've been told that, that it's a lot, that it's not even a watch that you lose money, the city loses money.
That's the study that I was referring to, that was conducted in our local market, Cass and Plain County by the National Association of Home Builders that was delivered to us in October of twenty-one. That says year one. There's a hundred and fifty million dollars in total income. Year two, there's seventy-two million dollars over the course of fifteen years. There's a net of a hundred million dollars net income to the local economy by nine hundred and fifty new simple family homes built in that market.
And I think the realtors and developers here have done a good job of, of selling the, the tax abatement. I think they've also done a really good job. My favorite, my bet project. And that is to, what kind of developers pay for the scale assessments of the, that I force back on everybody else. And I know if you're not taking that in, but we, remember, a special assessment commission did approve a motion asking you to do that.
Correct. Yeah. Any other comments?
I don't want to see another sunset on it because honestly, I think I just want to throw the element on the table. It feels like everyone knew about it on the council. And someone made the decision not to bring it up to talk about it. So hopefully they're sweeping it under. That's how it was perceived.
That was not, that's not correct. That is not correct.
Okay, all right. I, I thought I heard at least one or two of you saying.
Not by me.
Council knew about it and you talked about it. So.
The, the only reason a couple of us knew about it is it was decided on just prior to us being sworn in. So where that two-year sunset came in, they renewed it just prior to Ms. Berklin and I being sworn in.
Okay.
Sure.
And I know I, I've had conversations, obviously, with a lot of people. And I've been told, told someone that there were multiple conversations that it was potentially not brought up. So it was an inconvenience.
It could be. I was never included in any of those conversations.
You guys had discussed it several times, but it needed to be discussed.
I've not been included in any discussions.
Have discussed it and trying to get it on the.
What's done and done, that's where you look up and make sure of that.
Okay, any other, any other comments up or down on the abatement? Yep, go ahead.
I ended up getting over a six percent VA loan here. I had to pay for my mortgage allowance. Got my wife's money. Kids over there as well. We absolutely love it here. Doc's having that over six percent, but I mean, that two-year abatement is going to help us. Open six months, we're going to be able to refinance slower, not hopefully in that long. I'm hoping in that two years we can actually get. Appreciate it.
Anybody else? Um, council, do you guys have any other questions, concerns, more comments?
Oh, I do have some thoughts I'd like to share. I thank all of you for coming and all of the information that you've shared. I've also received tons of emails, Nextdoor posts, Facebook posts, lot, lots of. Information. It's been very helpful. I maybe jump around here a little bit, but to speak to some of the points. I have not focused my thoughts on this matter on thinking it's going to slow growth. I, I think that you're melding two different things into the conversation by saying not having the base, abatement is going to slow growth. The economic conditions that were discussed here tonight have been in place for a while. And in the Verity letter, he talks about the two percent absorption rate. Or too many new construction homes for sale that aren't selling, they're not selling fast enough. That happened when we had the tax abatement. I mean, the glut of homes in Horace was, happened. If you look, if I'm looking at his letter correctly, while we had the new home tax abatement. I think many economic factors go in the housing market as we've discussed here tonight. Recession, inflation, interest rates. I, I, I find it difficult to pin all of that. Deciding factor on a new home tax abatement. I don't believe people are moving to Horace for the new home tax abatement. I don't think people will stop moving to Horace for lack of it either. I am happy to accommodate the people that got stuck in this transition. That was never my intent. I don't think that was anyone's intent here. But we also need to remember, we're one of the fastest growing cities in the state. With, we issued more home building permits than West Fargo did last year in only seventy-four less than Fargo. And if you look at the base definition of a tax abatement, it is a tool that the city can use to encourage growth. In a blighted area to revitalize an area or to encourage growth in an area where city growth is lagging. Horace is not encountering any of these challenges. In fact, as we discussed tonight, it's exactly the opposite. And we have to also remember. When we unnecessarily offer a tax abatement, as we discussed here tonight, we're leaving money on the table for every taxing entity on your tax bill. Money that is sorely needed for everything we discussed here tonight. And I don't believe that the abatement is going to be the deciding factor for people moving to Horace. People are moving to Horace because they want to be here and they like our city. And I saw the city slideshow that was different than what was in my packet. I think maybe a late one was sent this afternoon. This, this slideshow was not the one that was in the meeting. This, this slideshow was not the one that was in the meeting packet. When was this one sent out? I did, I guess my point is I didn't get a chance to look at, at these numbers. Um, but if you look at some math like that came from the H B A or the Realtor letter, where they talk about, it's about a hundred and fifty a month. So that is four thousand dollars or two thousand dollars a year. Um, you can take any number you want. Or, so say Horace had, Horace did have three hundred and six new home building permits in twenty twenty two, unprecedented growth. If you use that number over a two year period. Sorry. Six hundred and twelve thousand in loss revenue over, over all taxing entities for over one point two million dollars over the course of two year for the tax abatement. That includes the tax loss to all the taxing entities on, on the bill. That's lost money and the money has to come from somewhere and where it comes from then is on the backs of the complete residents. Um, and I think that those are all huge factors that we need to think about tonight.
May I comment? I understand where you're coming from. I think we're looking at the short term though. I think we need to look at the long term and say we need to fill these lots with houses, pick people in here. Once they're there, the two years aren't going to matter because beyond that, they're there, the house is there forever hopefully. Generating income, the more residential houses, the more commercial that's going to help them in, more sales tax it's going to generate. Also the property tax there. So I think, I understand what you're saying with the short term, but I think we got to look at the long term. And there's enough factors already that are affecting people from moving into Horace that let's not add another one on to it.
I, and I agree with you, we need to look long term. I'm saying that I don't think the abatement is the decazitive factor of all the economic growth or the decision for people.
Go ahead.
I'm in residential real estate as well. The majority of the business that I do year over year is all the new construction. With that being the case, if you look at new homes being built into an area, those people are bringing kids that are going into the schools, they're spending money at the stores, case in point, we pick up piece, that case, we spend our money here locally, we, you know, involve ourselves in the community. When you look at cities around us all offering an abatement, West Fargo, Fargo, Moorehead, whatever the case might be, this will be a deciding factor for families. Affordability is at an all time low right now. You named a couple of cost points. We have a recession, we have inflation, we've got crazy building costs. It's at no fault of anybody in this room. It is what it is right now. And now you want to add another thing on top of it to make the pursuit of homeownership even more unattainable. That's the problem. So when we are looking at what families can afford, a two year trajectory for a family is significant. That two years allows the affordability for that home to be significantly improved. Therefore, bringing them into these communities and that, getting these families invested in the communities. That is going to generate so much more income big picture wise than what we're talking about here over a two year span of time. If you look at how many empty residential lots are currently sitting out there right now? And how many buyers I for one, and with Brooklyn for new construction buyers today, all who are have Horace now off their list. Before they were looking at Lost River, Cub Creek, there, we've been out here, this is where they want to be. Another like, oh, we heard about this, what's happening? We're going to pause that area. You have that, and that's just me as a one individual person, four people today impacted. And now we're looking at all of these developments that are out here. And they're going to what, sit empty or people will pick and choose if they have to go there. We're greatly going to slow at a time that Horace needs the people to come with all the infrastructure we have going in. Businesses will fail without people here to occupy them, period. You slow down that residential movement, that is what you're going to do. You're not just going to cripple your two year, whatever picture that you have. You have to think very long term of what you want this city to look like now that you've approved all of this construction to go in. Who's going to occupy that? And are we able to reinstate anytime that we feel it's having an impact?
Yeah. It's a resolution.
It's a resolution. So if the council didn't act, they didn't, they could, you know, six months later, year later, whatever it could be then.
But what about those opportunities that have lost in that six months or year?
Which he's just asking about if we can reinstate it any, anytime and that's, that's fine.
Well, I slow the flow now. It doesn't, it doesn't make sense.
It's, it's a question, right? It was just a question.
Question. I just want to know the legality of it.
Yeah, it's a resolution. So we're okay. Al, go ahead.
Just to the point about affordability of being at an all time low. When I moved out here, my loan was ten percent and I got the last one in town. My neighbor built right across the street and he was on a twenty one percent honor. So I take issue with what you've said. It's easy to front things up.
Yeah. So Mel said a question. Yeah, go ahead.
Say about, um, the tax abatement and stopping it now when Horace, everybody wants to be in Horace. I built a home many years ago. I lived in Horace sixteen years. I went and built a house in West Fargo in nineteen ninety six. And that was the year they even stopped the abatement. That was also the year of the flood of spring cargo, spring cargo. There was, West Fargo had all of Charleswood had just come available. We had tons and tons of lots. And we probably felt at that time, like Horace gives down, that we have, everybody wanted to be there because there's a lot of limited building in Fargo because of flooding. Just so happened that following year, we reinstated that tax abatement because they should find that what happened.
Yeah, thank you. Jeff, what's your comments on this?
So, um, to your point, I believe you said earlier, uh, every dollar counts. Okay, um, right now the residents of Horace are feeling the pinch. Um, and that is not to try to take away from anybody sitting in this room. Uh, we need to find a better solution than probably a tax abatement to try to help everybody out. Okay? Uh, the abatement only helps out to the new homeowners. If we can figure out a way to, uh, take the consistent increase from our assessed values and try to lower the mills to try to help everybody. It'd be greatly appreciated. Um, if, if we can try to keep what people pay at the same rate instead of constantly increasing every year, that would be, I'm guessing, much more appreciated by a broader audience than just the new homeowners. Um, I have some other comments. I'm going to lay off on those for right now. Um, my worry is we have a lot of, um, temporary workers that could be coming into the area, uh, for the diversion, possibly buying homes and then taking advantage of the abatement and then selling those homes. I worry about having a glut of used homes after that two year period, or let's say even four year period, once those construction workers move on. Uh, that is my biggest fear is that we are going to see a lot of foreclosures. Uh, Fargo is a much, much bigger city that would be able to uh, absorb a bigger hit, uh, if they had a lot of foreclosures. Uh, let's say the economy keeps going south and the recession, uh, recession turns into a depression. Um, if, if we continue to allow this, um, we are probably, in, in my opinion, maybe not doing the responsible thing of trying to figure out, okay, like you said, every dollar counts. Try to make sure that we, uh, as a city, try to protect ourselves a little bit, uh, going into this uncertain times. Um, and you know, if, if Fargo gets, you know, the homes that we lose or West Fargo gets the homes that we lose, they could absorb that kind of a hit if all of a sudden they have a lot of foreclosures. So, uh, that is the, the one point I'd like to make. Um, I fully respect, uh, all the builders, developers in this room. I wish we had a more open relationship and talking. Uh, as I said earlier, I did reach out, uh, to a couple of the different, uh, developers here in this room uh, and did not hear back from them. Uh, I wanted to find out about the last six months worth of sales. If, uh, these developers and, you know, some of these builders are directly tied to the realtors. Uh, I'm not looking for extremely specific numbers, but I was wanting to know, hey, do we see home sales slowing down at the same level as the national trend? If so, how long are these homes sitting on the market? Uh, at what point do you guys pull the trigger? Instead of trying to sell the home, do you rent out the home? And as soon as you rent out the home, obviously that abatement goes away anyways. So those are the pressures I had. That's the stuff that is on my mind. Um, that's my thoughts.
Okay, so, tell me what you got.
I'm just going to echo Stephanie and Jeff on this. I firmly believe that we need to be looking at ways to help all of residents in Horace. Um, it seems that when I campaigned, the one thing that everyone said was that it's so expensive to live here and, um, I gotta move. I can't stay here. And I feel like when we leave dollars on the table, it is taking away from having that funds so that we can help lower the costs for our residents. I want to look at when, if we choose to get rid of abatement, I want to look at how can we do a better job of lowering and keeping our budget intact here. That's my goal. So when I hear residents that are concerned, they know that I'm actively working on that. Um, I do think the abatement ties into that because I, like I said, I feel like it's just funny that we're just leaving on the table when it could be used to help all of the residents. We are in unprecedented growth. And everyone is feeling it like Jeff said. And so that's my thoughts. I too thank you all for the presentation that I you know, I, I've heard your thoughts. Um, but at the same time, I have to look at the residents that live here. Um, because I represent them.
What about the future residents though? If it truly does extend?
And they should say, you know what, Naomi, thank you for trying to lower.
The more people that are here though, paying taxes, doesn't that in effect, or the taxpayer person?
Don't think that the abatement is going to stop the growth. I just don't. If we see a trend in downward, which I believe right now is probably inevitable, it is January. Um, but like you said, you guys are the ones that came up here and presented and said that the, the recession. I mean, those are all things as well. So I don't want to blame it on a, on an abatement being dismissed or sunsetted. Um, I would rather.
What you're saying, that's another factor on top of the pile. Let's get that to that. And, and the question that I would have is, um, I understand what you're saying with the workers coming in. But if there's not, people live into those houses already, there's a good chance those are going to come rentals. Or those people.
And at that point, abatement is a moot point in those.
Right. So it is. But I mean, the point is they would be here and gone. And then what happens when they, the diversion's finished, which the diversion's going to take till what, twenty twenty seven or whatever? So there's some time there, but.
Okay. Sarah, go ahead.
Oh. I couldn't be more proud to be a representative of this community. So I'm just proud of you all for coming. This is remarkable. Um, Horace is a place for everyone. I, uh, I'm a single mom. I have a five year old daughter, one of the most full year. At any given point in time, changes in our economy could affect me just as easily as it could affect any other. I think that Horace is extremely unique with the fact that we have so many different types of homes in this community and so many different amenities that we have now and in the future are planning to offer to the folks that live here and the folks that want to come here. I'm thrilled to be a part of this community and to be a part of this council. And I believe that diversity is the key when we think about all of the different perspectives that have been brought to this council. Thank you for your presentation, all of you. There's so many perspectives that I heard tonight and I've taken so many phone calls from both sides. I've listened keenly to both and I think it's very important to do that and really absorb what's going on in the heartbeat of your community and understand the people that are talking without having great trouble notions. Um, that being said, it is my opinion that we pay enough in taxes. I'm in a difficult position on this council where, um, in previous years, some actions hadn't been taken regarding tax levels in this community. And in the last two years that I've been on council, we've had to make that right. And that's been a huge struggle. It's resulted in some very, very difficult decisions. I too believe that we can do better as a council to look at how we can lower costs for our residents. But I don't believe that eliminating this or allowing it to sunset is the way to do that. Those people, um, in our city administration make it very clear on a weekly basis that the funding mechanism for our city, for the much needed infrastructure that we have to keep up with all this growth, growth that I would add um, has been coming for the last twenty years. This is no surprise, right? Everything in the part of Moorehead areas has become itself. Um, does it mean that Horace has necessarily grown astronomically in the last twenty years? No, we've seen more of that growth, I agree, um, in the last couple of years. Unprecedented, I think, was the term. You was correct. So that being said, um, eliminating or trying to minimize the growth in our community at this late date, will do nothing but drive costs up for our residents and future residents. And I think that's a mistake. So that being said, um, I think the prudent thing to do here is not to run into anything. And I think that's one of the reasons that we've had such a slew of people that have come to express their opinions. God bless you all for doing so, both sides. Um, it is my opinion that this should be reinstated immediately. It is my opinion and has been my consistent opinion over the last several years. Um, that this is a good thing. We need to do everything in our power as a council to help our folks and help our people. And I, I do believe that there are ways to reduce costs. I don't believe this is it. I don't think this has enough impact to do that. Um, I also believe that we should eliminate the sunset clause. I think that these things take time. I'm not opposed to reinstating this effective immediately. And taking the time and doing the research over the next two years to determine if this is right or wrong for our particular community. I made a list of pros and cons. I'm not going to read through them all. They are. It's such a list. Um, but I will tell you that one side of my page has a lot more writing on it than the other side. And so for that reason, I have been for the last two years and will continue to be in support of this abatement. I have taken advantage of it personally. I believe it helps our small businesses and helps our community. I believe it is key to the funding mechanism in our community. And I'm proud to live here and I want to continue to see Horace grow and be a nice place to live. And that's my opinion, Corey.
Hey, sounds good. Um, do you guys have anything else? Okay, so I'll probably, I'm going to put my two cents in on this one too. Um, I'm the senior member on the council here, been with, uh, up here for six and a half years now. When I became mayor in twenty sixteen, um, Horace did have pretty much an anti-growth, anti-business attitude. We didn't really pick up on that right away, but it was within the year, I, we started realizing how some of these ordinances were written and how some of these, how the city hasn't reached out to anybody. I mean, nobody talked to the realtors, nobody talked to the other mayors in town, nobody talked to H B A. I mean, we were pretty much our own little enclave, alright? So we got our ordinances squared away. So we were a little bit more friendly, uh, trying to get more, you know, interest in the city of Horace. I did a lot of going around to the different organizations and I remember the first couple of years when I talked to people and I said, Horace, and they pointed north like it was hardwood, you know? It's like, no, 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 down this way. So I mean, it was just making awareness of, of, of these things, you know? Um, and like I said, I've tried to make sure that, you know, everybody knows about Horace and that you are more than welcome in Horace. Uh, we appreciate you coming here, especially everybody who's come in and will say the last, I came here in two thousand and there's been a lot of growth since then, you know? And like I said, I'm glad everybody's here. What we're doing here with this abatement and letting it expire where we're sitting here, it gives a perception that we're going to be rolling up the welcome rug. And after all the time that we have spent trying to make Horace this welcoming community, I am concerned that us doing this uh, gives a perception that we are no longer a welcoming community for families. And I, uh, I'm concerned about that. I think that we do want to continue to be a growing and welcoming community. And I, there, and I took advantage of the abatement myself and we built our home in twenty eighteen. And, uh, I agree that it should continue and be reevaluated, but continue as it was. So. With that, I'm going to look for a motion, guys.
I guess I'd just like to, I just have one other comment.
Yeah.
Um, I guess I don't. I, my comments and thoughts tonight were never based on thinking of slowing growth. It's based on the, the definition of the tax abatement. Um, I don't think we're being unwelconny, unwelcoming if, if we don't continue it. If we make the decision to keep the abatement for any reason other than its defined purpose of trying to attract growth to an area that's. If we make the decision to keep the abatement for any reason other than its defined purpose of trying to attract growth to an area that's lacking. What message are we sending to the families that move to Horus and buy an existing home? They don't get the tax abatement. Are, are we saying welcome here with some extra cash for you to homes that have the new, that have the tier tax abatement? But we're saying tough luck to people that come in to buy existing homes. If that's what we want to do, I think we need to find a different mechanism to. I, i- if, if we want to treat it as a welcome, I think we need to, to find a different mechanism other than this new home tax abatement. Because we're leaving large swaths of new people coming to our city for it. Um, we have responsibility to all of our residents and we have a responsibility to be prudent with the tax dollars. Thank you.
Can you help define how removing the tax abatement and slowing the growth as a result of that? Will then turn around and benefit the current resident. I own a home in here, out here. I've lived out here since two thousand eighteen. We did, we don't have a new construction home. There wasn't an abatement that was the driver for us to come here. We are in Horus because we love Horus. I sold a significant amount of houses out here that were not new construction as well. And again, it goes back to people wanting to be in Horus. So that happened, does it assume that pre-existing constru- or pre-existing homes are less desirable to people? Than homes offering a tax abatement simply for the data system. We'll show you.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's not what I, that's how it meant.
But my question though was, can you help explain how removing the abatement for all new construction going forward? Will then lessen the cost burden for the current residents we live here?
Because my, my comments were more to the fact that we're not, we're not offering an abatement to people that are moving into existing homes. I mean, if we, do you know what I'm saying? I mean, if, if we're looking at this situation as a welcome to the city, then I would like to welcome all the residents that are coming to the city. And maybe we need to look at a different mechanism because the new home tax abatement is only being offered to new, to new homes. If we're sticking to the true definition of what a tax abatement is.
Okay, Sarah. Alright, I'm looking for a motion, guys. We've got all the comments. Everybody's had their piece.
Make a motion to bring in, actually a two-part motion. And, and I don't know if I'm going to be in the majority or minority to find out here soon. The first part of the motion will be to reinstate the abatement back to January one of twenty twenty three.
Okay. You want to do a second part on? Do you want to keep it two years, one year? You want to keep it as is, but reinstate it back?
I would keep it as is. Um, the second part of that would be to, um, eliminate the sunset clause. So that there's no surprises gathered that for anyone. And then, uh, secondary comments to that is simply to use that two-year timeframe to evaluate what's happening there. And what's happening with the market, with the new data that's been presented this evening, current data. And, uh, allow people a chance to read and really determine if this is something that's needed or not needed. As we roll into the community, we're in, up against the neighboring community, that also supports us.
Alright, so Sarah's got a motion on the table. Somebody want to give a second on that?
We have discussion on the motion.
Go ahead.
What is to say that we don't just monitor the situation right now and renew the abatement? If we feel we need to at some point, um, later this year. If all of a sudden you see, uh, numbers going down or failing as far as home sales, uh, to a significant level. Uh, where we are concerned, number of lots or the number of open houses we have, um, what? What is to say we can't renew it at that later point in time?
There's nothing to say that.
Okay.
It is my personal feeling.
Understood.
That this was rushed.
Understood.
And that there were a lot of people, um, maybe not as informed about this. Uh, or the sunset clause or any part of it. And I think that when you do that, you impact so many different entities, entities negatively in. An unwitting way. And I don't think that it's right of us as a council when we represent a majority of people. And based on what I see here, the people that care the most about this have showed up. I have tallied the letters and whatnot. Um, the majority here is telling me that they would like to see this reinstatement.
So how about, how about this instead of, what you're going with here? With what, uh, Sarah is motioning on here, we put another deal in there, let it, we, we extend it. Let's evaluate this and maybe have another discussion and another vote on this, like in October.
What's to say we just don't bring it up in October to renew it at that point? Then you can, um, make it retro? Make it retro. I am, I am up for reviewing. In that sense, I'll make my request out again to the builders and the developers. Uh, when we request data, uh, please reply back to our emails and, um, bring back some data so we actually have something to look at.
Um, I did provide some data.
Yes, sir.
Um, I don't think I can just look at it, but.
No, I'm sorry, not today.
But I did provide some, uh, and it showed, oh, the last year, so we have, uh, two hundred and thirty lots. Were approved. We did get good infrastructure, um, on them, self-help fourth and fifth. And, uh, we've, we've had about eighty-seven lots. We did have an option, but children have given them back. We're kind of in question, so. I have one thing, uh, we, as a developer, we had invested a lot of time, paid money, beginning self-help fifth and fourth. And this infrastructure is in now. We have a lot of lot inventory. There's a way to somehow. If you do want to not reinstate it, there's a way to add something. And we're not the only, uh, developers, um, that are in this situation. All those lots that are available now, reconstruction season, at least let those under the abatement. Because none of the individuals that's been here knew about it. We didn't know about it. And all of this infrastructure was put in at that time. But that's one thing, um, I'm trying to point out. And I did send it to Jeff and Naomi. Um, I did kind of send it late, but there is, um, yeah.
And that wasn't to try to single you. And I promise you that. I appreciate you being open and honest with us.
I have provided some information. Can provide that to, uh, everyone.
Okay. So I have a motion on the table. Sarah, anybody want to do a second on it? One once, one twice. Okay, motion fails. Anybody else want to make another motion?
To make a motion to forego the abatement for, let's try an opposite, six months. Um, and see where we're sitting. Um, and also to Sarah's point, do a way with the subsetting. Um, if it's ever back in the place.
Okay, so what you're saying, what your motion is, is to continue not?
First, let's do a trial run for six months, eight months. I don't know, whatever, of no abatement.
To revisit in October?
To, to make it retroactive and if we decide to.
Yeah, we can make it.
But we can talk about that time. But for now then, it's to, we'll not, we'll not renew it, but we'll revisit this in October. Let's just say the first meeting in October.
If you want earlier, you're saying six months, so do you want to be?
What?
By August.
That's fine. I'm just picking a date. Pick one, go July. Okay, we'll do the first week in July. First, first meeting is on July. Let's go with that one. Is that okay? Naomi, alright. Okay, so Naomi's got a motion on the table. Can I get a second?
Mister Mayor, would you read the motion, please?
Brenton, you want to read it for us?
Yep.
Motion to eliminate the abatement for, uh, for six months, revisit first meeting in July.
Catch that out.
Eliminate it for six months?
It's good, yeah. They're not going to renew it for six months. The motion is on the table. And then we will revisit this, the first meeting in July. And then if we, you know, we can make a decision then if we do retro or whatever, but we're going to re, we'll revisit it in July. But for now then, it'll stay sunsetted. Hang on. Okay, can I get a second? Okay, Jeff, do a second. Yep, we're going to roll call this one. You ready, Brenton? Sarah?
No.
Naomi? Stephanie?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Okay. So that's, we revisit this back in July then.
Six months in July.
And between now and July, please, we do need the data. We do want to hear from the builders and developers. Uh, I did hear from a specific couple. Uh, I want to hear from more.
If anybody wants to stick around for the rest of the meeting, you're welcome, but I'll pause it for five minutes if anybody wants to, uh, head on out. And reset for five minutes.
Back on?
Okay. Well, Jim's not here. He was picking up the, uh, engineering public works that night.
I'll fill in the first portion in there. I don't know if I touched. Try it out. Thing we had, uh, appraisal report, all having that moment for twenty twenty three, twenty twenty dash four. But all kind of start with the first portion here. Uh, so in some conversations that we've had regarding future development that we're starting to see with the city of Horus. We realized with the conference of plan and transportation plan, we're directly being served in terms of access management policy. Of where, how we want to control access points on some of these major places, specifically seventy-sixth and a hundred. Which are hard to kind of see at this point. So for ordinance with the, uh, planning zoning permission, if our, uh, conference of plan doesn't. Have a specific access management area or anything like that, we have the ability to adopt an additional policy that would dictate. How we see access going forward on two roads. Um, the main example would be, uh, potential one lot subdivision that was going to happen off a hundred that applicant has since rescinded their application. But if it was approved and the county were to approve that access, we would have got no more access as on hundred for that section. Meaning any sort of other development apps occurring in access at eighty-first or go through Maple Lakes to then have their access. So that kind of sparked the initial thought of, we should really start to get be proactive here and take a look at access and define our access points. Which then would end up in a conference and find amendment to include some of those adjustments. But the first step is kind of getting that policy done. And so myself and interstate have kind of begun to take a look at that. And that's something that we want to do internally. Uh, to develop that access management policy and then bring that forward obviously for your adoption. But this is kind of a, hey, heads up, this is something we think needs to be done. You guys have any questions? Glad to try and answer any of them, but just kind of a heads up, this is something internally we would like to start seeing moving forward. So we're not caught off guard here when development does continue in some of these key areas.
So question I have for you is the, um, in MetroCob, they're already starting to talk about, uh, a loop around Fargo, which would be using one hundred thousand.
Correct.
Um, um, I believe that's probably what you're talking about, limiting the number of entrances.
Yeah.
To these developments. Um, do they, are they already telling us how many we can have? Uh, is it already being handed to us? It's kind of what I'm asking.
So right now, under that, we're still under Cass County control, County Road fourteen.
Yep.
They have access management policy at every quarter acre, but at the point in time when this becomes, or sorry, every, every quarter mile. At the point this becomes a city road and we have that access with the loop road that's going to go there. We need to be prepared on where that access is going. Having our policy match similar to what Cass County has on County Road fourteen. Is only going to benefit us in the long run in terms of saying, you know, we've dictated where this access is going to go. Especially in an area like this where we really only have one more plate with. I think it's important that we take a look at where should that access be to benefit not only one property, but any future development we have.
Agreed.
So nothing really action wise, but just as a, as a, when we get further in this, this will be something that's going to be brought forward to you guys. Um, and hopefully it's going to help us get ahead of some of these potential access issues that we are seeing.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else on that then?
Nothing on that. Um, I know there was appraisal numbers included as well. Like I said, I could talk to that. I can't, so.
Mean for the, for the wall project?
Yeah, I mean, so I don't know, Eric, if you've been versed in that, any of that or, I, I know a little bit of it was. Um, I guess the first fact is that in our office and they, I got mailed it, for those of you that don't. So I know my version in our office, I'm speaking with anyone that asks questions, so. Being handled this.
Okay. Anything else on guys?
Uh, you know, they were just sent ten D. I don't know if that's what we want to leave in.
Yep, go to the next one. I'm basically the declaration of official intent.
Yeah, so all, all those are IRS requirements. So the city typically spends money to get these projects flowing. Uh, before you guys have any bond funds available, whether that's temporary bonds or permanent refunding government bonds. So all these, uh, declarations of official and NC, the city has these expenses that they've, uh, acquired or, or spent. And that they'll reimburse themselves once the city bonds to the project within a few months.
Okay.
That's all it says, and the values that are in there.
Yeah.
Those values are high. Those are, those are typically the values in there higher than what we think, uh. The value of the project and what the interest will come back on, um, because we have to pay more than, than that dollar.
Okay, and I just.
Seems like they're a lot higher.
If anybody wants, I made a chart because it was, it's hard to track. I've not been through this process before because I'm new. Uh, but it's hard to track, um, which projects you're talking about, just with the numbers. So if anyone's interested, I made a chart which has the names of them too. Um, and so. So there are projects for twenty twenty-two and one for twenty twenty-one for about ninety-two million. Is this different than what we talked about in the November meeting when we talked about temporary refinancing improvement bonds?
Yeah, so some of these that are on here, the city hasn't been bonded for yet. Some of them they have. There's just kind of a housekeeping thing on my end to make sure.
Okay.
So like, the city has been bonded for sixty-six, sixty-third, Chestnut, Rivers Edge, or Alberg Acres. So half the city has bonded for half.
Okay, and so which was the one in November that was just, it was, you may don't have this in front of you, I know. It says twenty twenty-two B, bond not to exceed twenty-six million, twenty twenty-two.
Yeah, it's a temporary refunding improvement bond that proceeded last year. So see typically for the past few years has two bond assurances. And that's where you have an A, then you have a B, and then twenty twenty-two just being weird, which is the city.
Is that for a specific project, that dollar amount?
Well, that one, that one in particular was Cup Creek second edition.
This twenty twenty-two?
Twenty twenty-two B, it's Cup Creek second edition, I don't believe that it. Uh, well, yeah, uh, Deer Creek was supposed to be the thing that. So I think it was just Cup Creek second edition that we had in that. That we had in that as temporary bond. And what we do is we temporarily bond the funds. Do the project and then permanently find the city permanent bond. What we found is that gets us a lot more, closer to actual costs. That we've incurred. Uh, you could bond, permit bond based on estimate, but if your estimate ends up being too high. Then you've already bonded that and you have to special assess that, so. Uh, we follow that, this gives us a little more, or more exact on the costs, or closer to our costs, and we're not assessing people more than what we have.
Okay, thank you. I just didn't, I don't really understand the process very well, so thank you for that explanation.
Alright, so any other comments on that or questions?
Yeah, to approve that one.
Yep, we got to prove that one. Just want to mention, yep. So, so for four D, can I get a motion on that?
I'll make that motion.
My second.
Jeff makes a motion to approve the uh, after phrase here, declaration of official intent. Stephanie does the second. Alright, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright, motion carries. Alright, Brett, talk about her video system.
Sorry, right.
Sorry.
Hey, couple updates and discussion items I have here, video system update. Uh. Ray Tech was in the fire hall today installing fiber. And we're working with fire department Ray Tech to have our own fi- fiber line. Coming here to this room, or that will hopefully help improve some of the connectivity issues that we're having. With the projector and give us a strong internet feed. For our video system if we were to go around a live stream. Uh, they have, Fire has electrician working towards getting electrical components. Set up for the video system to be installed. So we already have some electrical work done over here and above. Uh, we're microphones to plug in right here. So we have a microphone system like we used to have, and then we'll get cameras installed. So step one was the internet feed. That one, I believe is complete. We're just working on the kinks now and back. Uh, step two, electrician, electrician that started work. Look, you see, just making sure it stays in line if they start in work here. Uh, hopefully they'll be able. You know, if they're, all goes well, they should be able to knock out a bit of that work this week and next. Uh, we're going to try porn, we're looking at. Uh, the month of February, they probably. They're telling us between two or three weeks after electrician was done, they'll be able to get some schedules. We're looking at the February for cameras installed. Uh, then we'll start testing them out, testing them out during some of the meetings. Our focus is the recording. With that camera system, by your saying, we don't have to have internet necessarily to be able to record. However, if you do a live feed or live stream, you don't have to have the internet, obviously. Uh, so we want to make sure that we have a little bit of time to be testing out, making sure we're working out the kinks again. Uh, with a goal in mind, right now. If the council wanted to live stream the meetings again, future, uh, that could possibly happen around that. Maybe April or May timeframe. And I'm giving you ranges because there's a lot that could happen of. We're piecing apart, you know, they're having trouble with electrical, just getting dry porn or anything. Uh, and so I want to make sure we have a cushion there. Obviously, if all goes well, it could be sooner. But like I said, I want to make sure you have a general idea of what we're shooting for right now. Uh, there are fires working with us to have a dedicated area where to get our. System for recording and everything, storage closet there, we'll have a lock cabinet, same thing for the microphone areas, we'll have a. Area, it'll just be like a lock panel or something, as far as I'm understanding, and so I'll post in Tampa with it if they need. Say they are renting the fire hall for other purposes or anything, so it's still secure. Which it does get into the conversation, live streaming. Council, if you have, uh, if you'd like to bring that up as a separate conversation another day, or. Or what you'd like to do there.
I feel like we already motioned.
There should be a conversation from council. You want to do, I'm sure.
I think we already motioned to proceed.
Okay.
Did, unless I'm mistaken. I do think we did. That's what we got on this road.
Yeah.
Yep.
Double check that.
Yeah, I'll double check. I followed this, I have. Had on there was, so I make sure we get the conversation. Uh, another one is, had some. Kind of for conversations and certain property about, should we be putting the agenda packet on our website? Uh, overall, I believe that, you know, council, that if that's a decision, I'd like to say yes, have this on there. I'll just continue just doing the agenda. Okay, council, what you'd prefer, proceed on both ways.
I'm, I'm the one that asked for that.
Share them, you know, I can share the information if anybody ever asks, very rarely do we ever have, anybody ask for that. But. Subcouncil will do like this.
I guess I'm the one that asked for it to be on the, for a discussion point, I guess, at least. I don't see any reason why we wouldn't. All the other local, regional cities do it. Um. I think full communication of the residents, what they do with the information, once we give it to them is, is up to them, but I think it's our obligation to give it to them. And I think that's the easiest way to do it. It's my thought.
Is that a lot of work on your part? Yeah.
Um, but actually, I've.
Okay. Okay.
So it might take time, but it's, that's why I'm asking from council. Why you're like, it's, it's a matter of buying them all as PDF or having individual PDFs or how we posted that type of thing.
I was going to say, so how do we post it? That's what I'm kind of looking at.
It's easily, it's literally, it's six to one half dollars, the other.
It's.
Okay.
It's more of the files, getting all the files together than is it too bigger.
Right, see, that's more my.
Nothing we do is secret here.
I don't, I don't really care either, just, just make sure, I mean, all I want to do is make sure that it's easy, we're not overburdening. We can get it out there.
We got, we got bigger things we need to be, so whatever's easiest.
Yep. Do what it takes to do, Sally, I don't know, whatever.
Yeah, okay, we're towards it then.
Yeah, alright. Anything else on that?
I have.
Alright, so uh. Portralling reports Thursday, last Thursday I was at the State of the Cities, that was kind of fun. Six hundred fifty people on that place, man, that was awesome. Um, and we had a little fun with the mayor's back and forth. Um. We did do giving, I did the Giving Hearts Day video that the mayor's challenged. So Sally took off, but I did put that, we did that on Friday, I think she's going to post it. If she hasn't, she's going to do it tomorrow.
I did post it yesterday.
Well, okay, I see how often I get out there, right? Um, a meeting with the realtors in the morning for their, you know, I think they call it and have a little presentation for them. And I have an HBA banquet to attend on Thursday evening, which should be an entertaining time.
Wear armor.
Yeah. Yep, anyway, okay, that's what I got. Sarah, what you got?
I have been uh, pretty tied up with this whole deal, a lot of people, because as you know, I'm a construction community, so. I have had a lot of those folks, have a lot of people in the new neighborhood that's been recently, you know, guys been changing out today. Uh, so I'm not going to kill that. Uh, also had an interesting meeting on uh, Terry, Eric's third. Been discussed in future meetings, so it has been a really. But other than that, no, I have uh, no further updates. We got some good things coming as far as uh, some of the projects that are coming this year. There will be some headaches with some detours and things like that, but. I'm confident that we're working through that and that we have a plan. Whether provided.
I was gonna say, has the county reached out anymore about what the, the plan is as far as when they're going to start knocking stuff down?
Oh, it's me or.
Okay, I've.
I haven't heard April.
Well.
Basically, you and.
When it frosts, obviously.
Frost.
When the weather conditions start becoming.
Yeah. Alright, and that's fine, I just, I didn't know if they presented anything else from what they talked about when they were here, so that.
Do you have any else? I hear that there isn't much for frost this year?
I have heard that and we have seen some uh, digging. Eric just elaborated is we got see snow cover helps. We have seen KPH do some digging, work in some areas, uh, like a little. More aggressive, but at the same time, they are, they have been able to dig because yes, the frost generally isn't too big this year.
Okay.
So hard, this is.
Anything else?
That's all I got.
That's all you got? Stephanie, what you got?
Um, I also talked with lots and lots of residents this week, had some really good conversations. Um, we just continue to work uh, through committees for the hundred and fiftieth. Um, we've had some good meetings about that lately too, so we just continue to push forward with our planning.
Yeah, Jeff?
Uh, we had a, a MetroCog meeting last week and uh, during that meeting. Uh, it was brought up to a vote on the uh, realigning of funds for a couple of our projects that was approved. Um, and other than that, uh, just some general HR stuff uh, we had to take care of. And that's about it. Um, I don't really have a lot, uh, as everybody here probably. Has had, uh, we had a lot of meetings uh, with residents. Um, a lot of my meetings. Uh, were me reaching out and asking, okay, give me your opinion on, you know, how should we handle this abatement thing? Um, asking current residents, trying to figure out what, what their views or their opinions are. Um, and then we met, uh, Naomi and I met uh. Late last week with Chris uh, over at the coffee shop, um, just to get some one-on-one time with him. Uh, get his perspective uh, on how he thinks uh, the housing market is going right now. And as he said early in the meeting, he sent us some information late today. I have yet to have a chance to read that.
Okay, but you mentioned about MetroCog and the Hundredth Avenue thing, bypass. Have they presented any type of a timeline on that yet, or are they still just talking, so they're?
They're, they're talking and they approved a uh, study uh, from the highway department. Uh, they want to do a study on the lower half of the loop. Um, that study will be started at, I believe sometime this year, uh, you can correct me if I'm wrong on that. But that is.
But are they still thinking the Kendrick Road down to one hundred? Is that what they're still going on?
Yes, sir. And then they're going to somehow connect one hundred over to, um. Oh boy, what town was that over in Minnesota? Uh, Saban, I believe, yes.
Well, they're calling that.
There is no bridge currently to cross that part, but they, they said they had all the land access already, and I was like. That's an interesting topic, so it'll, it'll be interesting to see how it all plays out.
Okay, so that, so they're going to hook into the interstate over there.
Correct.
Got it, okay.
Interesting. And that is not happening for quite a while, so nobody.
Yeah, I was going to say, that's why I was asking if they, because this has been talked about for, uh. This was in their plan back in twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, when they started that, we just happened to catch it in the county, you know, what's this? So twenty eighteen, maybe, yeah, we went up there and had to talk with them about that. So anyway, that's just an interesting thing.
The current study they, they had right now showed the uh, taking of the loop will actually take longer than actually just driving the interstate through town. Including the traffic, so I'm not exactly sure what the loop is for, but it's to uh, to allow the, I guess, uh, semis to avoid the.
It's a truck route.
Yeah.
That's all it is.
The truck route will come through our neighborhood.
Yeah, that was the whole, that was the whole premise, was to get the trucks low. Steve, what's up?
When that route does come or start coming through. I suggest we start working now with the county that it's a non-hazardous cargo route.
That's something you're not.
You're not, some of the placards driving through that we sometimes see through here.
I want to make a note on that, just for the MetroCog bunch. He's there and thought that.
I'm in the right.
Yeah, going to back.
But that's, that, that may be a county versus us, I think is, then that gets it out of the center of town.
Yes, I don't know, it makes sense. Okay, that's it. We all make a motion and get out of here?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Jeff? Who makes the second? Stephanie makes the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Alright.